So you're wondering who's doing it?
Yeah, I know.
Because it was a reverse effect, but.
Do you want to come over here?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I'm on. Yeah, it doesn't.
To you.
Oh, yeah. Nah, he's gonna keep me company. Yeah, the only thing I'm gonna really look for is after the lunch is over, I'm gonna go pull the results from Johnson County. And especially one Johnson County.
That's a good idea.
But just out of curiosity, the people who knew him, see how they feel.
The day it was open, I voted in on through it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I didn't know, you know, when I got out of hospital, I didn't know how to react, wasn't gonna go. So I didn't have Steve Ballas. So I voted like a monkey.
Yeah, well, you know, it's two ways.
Yeah, I just, I'm just curious because I really hadn't seen anything on the news about, you know, one of them being a favorite or not the favorite.
Years ago, Mayor Jackson, he was the mayor, made a quote that I still go by. He said, my income.
Dan, I feel like there's a space between us.
I can't tell him.
We both kind of moved over or something.
Those take me long.
Yeah. Well, man, as far as I'm concerned, everything in Washington will be completely disorganized.
Thank you.
So they can't pass any laws to bother them.
Yep, that's what I'm saying, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, I got notice. I was number 502 this year.
Oh, that was.
You were 502?
That was.
Well, sure, maybe one or two of them passed away. It could be up there now.
Which is, Keith, I voted in my local office.
Yeah.
I know, my Michael, they know me.
I know, I know.
My daughter is driving me crazy today.
People ask me how I vote. I said, well, it's real simple.
Yeah, I said that.
I vote for family, whether I come down. Then I vote for friends.
We all have.
Then I vote for the politicians.
Outside this.
After that, I may go to politics.
She's really joking.
After that, I just write it like.
And that's, that's the high.
How old is she?
The same one.
Nineteen, nineteen. I think she's thirty.
And I can't imagine nothing that's a president to race.
If you say hope somebody else gave me.
I guess that starts getting way too loud.
World time. It's going to be a new revolution in leadership.
I told her.
This is daddy's capital.
You'll pass it along too.
Yeah. I think some younger Democrats will work against Biden.
The deluded one.
And the Republicans, they ain't no kind of.
Everybody's wrong with it. Everybody's. You can't pull the wool in about that, but you got all these things.
For people you least expect.
You don't bring a beach on. We got about ten seconds.
Different world, man.
Go make sure the microphones are on. Looks like they are. Good evening. I want to call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order before we begin with our invocation pledge. I want to welcome back our friend Keith, who is on vacation for a while. We, uh, we love you, uh, we missed you, but we're glad you're back.
Okay, it's glad to be back.
Yes.
I never thought I would actually be happy to be at work again.
How long would that last?
Probably a day.
Time is still out. Good evening, everyone. Once again, we assemble ourselves in the House of Government. Let us bow our heads and pray, give thanks to God Almighty. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to once again assemble in the House of Government and do the business of the city. We ask for guidance and directions and good decisions, and you be in the midst of everything we do. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Drake, the roll, please.
Carrie Hyde's Ward one.
Here.
Jay Stapp Ward two. Carrie Roth Ward three.
Here.
Calvin Cooley Ward four.
Here.
Carrie Fox Ward five. Tafran Ward six.
Please note, uh, Councilman Fox away with a head calls. Jay said let us know he's on vacation, so, uh, you guys get me voting tonight, so.
And Mayor, just a reminder to all council members, it does take four affirmative votes or four negative votes to approve or deny any action of the council.
Thank you for that. Ms. Drake, you just called the roll, right? Yeah, we did that already. Thank you. To a flying start, let's, uh, approve the council meeting minutes from our November, excuse me, October twentieth meeting, and councils had an opportunity to look these over, and any edits would be proper at this time. If there are none to be made, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
And I will vote for the affirmative as well. Uh, we have a second reading of an ordinance, T twenty-two oh four. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started with that, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Presently, the applicant is seeking to allow private parks in the, as a special use in the office commercial zoning district. Currently, it's allowed in most other, in all the residential zoning districts and so forth. They are looking to put a private park on a piece of office commercial property, which will be the subsequent request if this text amendment goes through. With that, this is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes from the first reading, and Planning Commission did recommend approval five oh of this proposed text amendment.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Randy on this item? If there are none, I'll turn it over to council for further consideration.
You do need to open a public hearing since it is a zoning matter.
This is a second reading of an ordinance, a text amendment, so we do have to have a public hearing for that?
Yes.
You would think I would know that. Thank you. We're just testing to see how sharp you were, and you passed your test.
Okay.
All of a public hearing for T twenty-two dash zero four. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Hi.
Hi.
Lauren Knoll, Southland Engineering, one fourteen Old Mill Road. Um, I don't have much to add from the last meeting, just here to answer any additional questions that you guys may have.
Thank you. Any questions? We're good.
Okay, thank you.
We missed that too, Keith.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, still in the midst of a public hearing. Anybody wishes to step forward, speak for or against, T twenty-two dash zero four? I will now close the public hearing for T twenty-two dash zero four, turn it over to council for consideration.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote for the affirmative as well. Uh, we'll move on to S U twenty-two dash zero four.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is the follow-up request to the proposed text amendment that y'all ju, or the text amendment y'all just approved. With that, the applicant is applying for a special use permit on approximately thirty-four acres. Um, it sits kind of back behind the Ingalls Grocery Store on West Avenue. They are looking to do a private park for, uh, to allow baseball fields, uh, to be rented for practice purposes. With that, uh, it was evaluated based on seven standards for special use permit, and Planning Commission did recommend approval five zero.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Randy at this time? There being none, I'll open up a public hearing for S U twenty-two dash zero four, and again ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against, to do so at this time.
Hello again. Uh, Lauren Knoll, Southland Engineering, one fourteen Old Mill Road, just again here to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Anybody with questions?
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to step forward to speak for or against S U twenty-two dash zero four may do so at this time? And seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for consideration. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
I'll vote for the affirmative as well. Uh, S U twenty-two dash zero three.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed special use permit application request by Cash Environmental to do a solid waste transfer station located at three fifteen Industrial Park Road. This is a second reading. There have been no changes since the first reading. I did pass out a letter that the applicant's representative did produce today, and it kind of restates, um, their response to the opposition that did show up at the first reading and reiterated rated the proposed conditions they are willing to put on this property if you choose to move forward with it. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval four to one on this application.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy on this item at this time? Thank you. Over a public hearing for S U twenty-two dash zero three, and it's anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against, to do so at this time?
Brandon Bowen, fifteen South Public Square for the applicant. Uh, we presented at the last public hearing, so I'm just here today to answer questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you.
I do.
And again, public hearing for S U twenty-two dash zero three. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for S U twenty-two dash zero three and turn it over to council for consideration.
Make a motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
And I will vote for the affirmative as well. Mr. Dixon, you're up next.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we are required by law to be a member of the Georgia Utility Protection Center. This allows us to receive and respond to utility locate requests from city utilities. Our, the annual membership, uh, fee is fourteen thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty cents. This is a budgeted item, and your approval is recommended.
Questions, comments, or motions? Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote in the affirmative, and it passes. Thank you. Mr. Forsythe.
Yes, sir, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to, um, for the Water Department to hire BM and K Construction and Engineering for easement acquisition services for three pipeline projects that are currently in design. We have used this firm before with success. We're asking for a not to exceed cost for these services of thirty thousand, four hundred dollars as budgeted expense. Each, each invoice will be paid based on the particular project they are working on.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Sidney on this? If not, a motion's in order?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote for it as well. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Porta?
Yes, ma'am. It's a renewal for the health insurance and vision insurance of twenty twenty-three. We've been with Anthem for a couple of years. They came initially at a little over fourteen percent rate increase. Talked to our brokers, went out to the market. They were able to get Anthem down to just a four percent rate increase, uh, and that's my recommendation is to stay with Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield for twenty twenty-three with health and vision insurance.
I'll just comment that, you know, it's, it's one item on an agenda. I know it takes an awful lot of work by a lot of people, and I know, uh, especially over the last few months, taking a more concerted effort, uh, to enhance the benefits of, of working with the city of Carzville. So I appreciate your hard work and everybody else who had a part on this item, and I'll turn it over to council for consideration.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote for it as well. Uh, Mr. Hampton, you got the next couple.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this item right here, the directional board for Aquafield, this is basically, uh, a process we need to get power to the, uh, new transformer. We've had a couple of meetings here lately where we've been, uh, getting things ready for their expansion. Um, basically, this is a, a request to use our contractor, um, Southern, I forgot the name of them, Southern Utility Group to, uh, board a parking lot for us, get conduit and the wire over to the location to service the transformer that they purchased. Uh, we could not use a gas apartment just because of the complexity and existing private owned facilities in the, in the area. The quote came back from Southern Utility Group for twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. We were asking for a cost not to exceed of, uh, twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, just to give us some leeway in case they hit rock or anything under the parking lot. Um, this was a budgeted amount.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
I'd say, uh, have we, have we bored under their parking lot before?
Yes, for, this is Transformer F, so G, we bored, had to board the parking lot for that one also. Yeah.
I thought it, we hadn't, but, okay, thank you. And I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote for it as well. Thank you. Next item, please, Derek.
Yes, next item is a power quality monitor from, uh, PMI or Power Monitors, Inc. Uh, these are the, um, monitors slash recorders that we can put in pan out transformers to do power quality, uh, studies for our customers that are having any type of issues or any type of questions with the, their service, uh, any voltage dips or anything of that nature, harmonics. The electric department has asked for authorization to, uh, purchase this unit for twelve thousand, eighty dollars and sixty-eight cents. Uh, this is actually to replace an older model, uh, unit that we have with less memory, and it can't record as long. It's kind of getting outdated. Um, it was a budgeted expense, and any software, anything we need to run the recorder, it's the same software for the one we already have, so we don't have to buy any software or anything for this one.
Okay. Any questions on this item? If not, a motion's in order. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
I'll vote for it as well. It passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Less memory and not be able to record things, I can relate to that. Mr. Carter, chief, come on forward.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the first item I bring before you tonight, this is for the purchase of five Panasonic Toughbook computers and associated mounting hardware. Uh, these computers are placed in fire apparatus, emergency response vehicles. They link our, uh, firefighters in the field to the Barto nine-one-one CAD system, also pre-incident planning and, uh, any information if they need while responding to mitigating the emergency. Carzville IT staff, they have obtained two quotes for this particular project, ProLogic ITS in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and five dollars and fifty-one cents, and also GW, uh, CDWG in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven seventy-seven ninety-nine. We're requesting permission to purchase from our low bid source, which is CDWG in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, ninety-nine cents, twenty-twenty SPOS project through Carzville Fibrocom.
Thank you. Questions from chief on this? I'd ask you to repeat it, but I'm not gonna do that.
Thank you.
Carol, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve this purchase.
Second. All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
And I vote the affirmative as well. Continue on, chief.
Yes, sir. At the October tenth, uh, council meeting, Mayor and Council, y'all approved for us an inspection certification of our Class B training props that's located at the fire, joint fire training center. Um, you had approved that in during that session, a project amount of twenty-one thousand, ninety-four dollars and twenty-four cents that would be split equally between Barto County and the city of Carzville. Uh, since that approval, I've had some developments that's come up concerning this Class B prop, and I'm afraid that, uh, we're really just not gonna be able to pull this project off for this amount. I think I need to go back to the drawing board. We need to research this a little bit more, do a little bit more in-depth planning as we go forward. So I'm asking you tonight to withdraw or appeal your approval from the October the tenth, and allow me to come back to you later date with a better plan.
Okay, I guess it's proper, just to withdraw the approval?
Yes, a motion to withdraw the approval granted.
Okay.
Mayor, I appreciate the chief of Carter finding this out because there's been some change in leadership in Parker County and just, uh, some things have come to light on this, and rather than moving forward, he's gonna take more due diligence time to see what's better for our, our chat returning purposes.
Great, thank you. Carol, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the withdrawal of this, uh, training maintenance project.
Second.
All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
Motion carries with my vote being the fourth affirmative.
Thank you. And finally, I bring before you tonight approval for our annual HVAC, uh, heating and air maintenance contract for the Carzville Public Safety Headquarters. This is equally split between the fire department and the police department's budget. We have two proposals, Georgia Mechanical of Swannie, uh, their annual amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-four cents, also Max Air Mechanical of Marietta, uh, their price is fifteen thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. There's a difference between these two proposals of five hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents. I'm asking tonight that you approve the best bid, the best bid based upon, uh, the quicker response times of Max Air and also some performance issues with the low bid provider that we had last year. So it would be for approval of a best bid, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars, Max Air Mechanical from Marietta. This is within our budget.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve the best bid, um, with Max Air Mechanical.
Second.
All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
And I approve as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We wanted to bring before you a, uh, a request to, uh, purchase a Fibrocom van, cargo van for Fibrocom. We received four, uh, three bids. We're recommending the low bid, uh, from, uh, Prater Ford for a Ford Transit cargo van with the Adrian Steel package for thirty-five thousand, nine ninety-one eighty-eight.
I should have asked this in the work session. I did looked over at my packet. How many bids back did we get?
Got three. We got two from Prater, and then the other was from Combs.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Uh, one was for sixty-six thousand, and then the other two were very close at thirty-four, thirty-five.
Thank you. Uh, questions, comments, or motions?
Second.
All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote for it as well. Next item, please, Randy.
Thank you. Uh, yes, sir, this is a contract amendment requested by the municipal court judges. Uh, at our initial contract renewal in January, they did not include this piece. This is for jail visits, uh, warrant requests, and other hearings at the jail. This allows them to get an additional amount of monies, fifty dollars for those visits. Uh, we incurred twenty on one year and about twenty-four, twenty-five on another year. Uh, so we're requesting approval for that.
Thank you. Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
The second.
All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
And carries with my vote as well.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Yes, sir, it's a pension ordinance. Uh, we received fourteen qualified proposals for our investment consultant for the pension.
Hold on, if you go back, we're on item number, uh.
We skipped the generator. Sidney would not like that, but I was moving with you. So, uh, the Water Department administrative complex generator, uh, I don't know, Sidney told me before he left, get the generator. Yeah. That's on there.
We tabled it because there wasn't here.
Uh, the administrative complex that we're building, we requested bids for a natural gas generator, coal or natural gas generator. We're requesting approval to purchase the generator, two automatic transfer switches, plus the installation for one seventy-six sixty from Nixon Power Services. Uh, one caveat on Nixon, they maintain the ones that we did at the gas department, all the others, so we have this, uh, similar generator. Of course, it was sized for that building. We're requesting approval. It's a fifty-four week lead time on the generator. The other pieces are twenty-four, twenty-five weeks, but it's still outrageous, so we're trying to get it in so we finish the building next year, hopefully.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Any questions on this item? And if there are none, a motion's in order.
I make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second. All in favor to get this thing aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote the affirmative as well. It passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll tell Sidney we made it, made it happen. Okay, the, the last one is, uh, for the pension ordinance, uh, and we had, we updated two items at this. Our custodian, uh, as of last year, is, uh, Salem Trust, so we're updating that piece, and you have it before you. But we're requesting your approval to move forward with Segal Marco Advisors as our investment consultant. Uh, essentially, we went through a bid process over several months, fourteen qualified bids, was narrowed to four, and then the pension board voted in and selected Segal Marcos. So we're asking for your approval to move forward. It'll be a second reading, and we'll bring any contract language that Keith and the others have seen on that.
Thank you. Any questions at this time?
And the ordinance before you will be amended by the next meeting, and it will include language that it takes effect on December first.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions on this at this time? All right, we'll take it up for consideration on November seventeenth.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Reinhardt, you've got the next item?
I am a mayor and council. This is the first reading of this ordinance. This is the ordinance for the fiscal year two, two thousand twenty-two budget ordinance amendment. At the end of the fiscal year, we have to go in and adjust the, the budgets for the general funds, special revenue funds, and SPOS funds. The basic, the process of the amendment of the budget will bring them back into generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP standards. These adjustments reflect the necessary changes needed to bring the budgets back into a balance with the revenues, where the, where the revenues equal the expenses and mirror the actual year-to-date revenues and expenses in each, in each fund, uh, each type of fund. Again, this is the first reading of this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Tom? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Again, we'll take this up for consideration on November seventeenth. Chief McCann, you've got the final items tonight. Excuse me.
So on August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, we applied for a grant, school safety grant, uh, to purchase ten Daniel's Defense MK eighteen rifles and ten defensive shields. Um, we recently got approved for the grant, which was for a hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight eighty-one, and we would also have to do a local match of twenty-three thousand, eight eighty-one. Basically, I'm requesting approval to pay the twenty-three thousand, eight eighty-one using federal asset forfeiture funds.
Thank you. Any questions for chief on this item?
This, this great, uh, this is training too, right?
It is. It's, it's, we send two officers, our SWAT commander and our training officer, uh, they get trained up, and then they're certified to train the rest of the officers at our PD. Okay. So that's part of it. Yeah. Yeah.
It's just not shields.
No, no.
Okay, all right.
Frank, uh, will there be anything else the mayor needs to sign related to this?
Uh.
The next item, I think, is what I was.
No, that's a separate grant.
Oh. Basically, on this grant, I don't believe so. Basically, on this grant, I don't believe so.
Okay, I just didn't know if you wanted to throw in additional authority for the mayor to sign anything.
I don't believe so, I think they've already approved.
Okay.
Uh, but I'll get with Brielle, and if so, uh, next week, so.
Okay.
Council, just include it in the motion if there's any additional paperwork, and then that way, if there happens to be?
That's perfect.
Go from there.
Yes.
Okay. Chairman, attend a motion.
Make a motion to approve, uh, ma- um, matching this gr- the grant match amount, and also give a mayor approval to sign any paperwork that may need to be assigned by, for his authority.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
I'll vote for it as well, it passes, go ahead, chief.
Yeah, I'm not, request, I'm requesting approval from the council to apply for a governor's office of planning and budget grant to purchase fifty-six tasers at a cost of two hundred and one, six hundred dollars. This grant will cover the entire cost of these tasers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Was there, I'm trying to remember, there was something, I thought we talked about additional paperwork in the work session, was this and that one as well?
Yeah, I think so.
This one, we'd have, that one's an application.
Yeah, you'll need to, uh, yeah, have authority to.
Seize vehicle? Never mind.
Okay.
This one's actually the application itself, so there'll be, if we get approval, you may have to sign some additional paperwork, but as of right now, it's just for the application.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second?
Yes, yes.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
I don't know that I want to, it'd be, it's confusing, but I will, passes unanimously. Go ahead, chief.
So every three years, uh, we're required to submit a permit, uh, get a permit approved by the Department of Public Safety for a speed detection, uh, permit. I'm requesting that the council authorize the mayor, uh, to sign any and all documents in reference to that speed detection permit.
Good one. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion, I'll vote in the affirmative on that as well. Chief, it's just another day, everybody thinks they're gonna do your job better than you, right?
That's fine.
Good job, chief.
Thank you. So on September fifteenth, one of our officers assigned to the DEA task force, Jake Lee, seized a two thousand sixteen Nissan Sentra va- valued at sixteen thousand dollars. And I'm requesting that the council authorize the mayor, the city manager, and I to send a letter to DOJ, so, to show them we're authorized to receive this vehicle when it's forfeited. We'll be required to pay twenty percent, uh, of the value of the vehicle when it's forfeited. And we'll use this vehi- vehicle for undercover purposes, and also to transport officers to the police academy.
Questions, comments, or motions?
I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve this, um, approve the letter to request, um, taking ownership of this forfeit, this, uh, forfeited asset and pay the twenty percent, um, as required.
Second.
And allow me and the chief and the city manager to make all the signatures and everything?
Same way.
Good. Motion and second, all in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
I'll vote in the affirmative, motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief, very easy and seamless tonight. Is there any other business that needs to come for council this evening?
I did, I brought my delirium back. Yeah.
That's it, motion adjourned? They go.
All right.